Good evening. I'd like to call the November 10th, 2025 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting in the Dare County Administrative Building in Manio and the time is 5:00 PM. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment in silence. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight, not only in person but also on the web. We appreciate your dedication and support for Dare County Schools. I'd like to recognize a couple of our county commissioners. I see Mr. Burris in the back. Mike, how you doing? Ms. Balance, where does she? Thank y'all for being here tonight and not only you two, but the rest of the commissioners, y'all's support to Dare County Schools. We do appreciate your service and support. Next, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jameson Cook to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Brower. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays, motion carries. So we have the agenda. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Hitch for public comment.
No public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hitch. Next will be announcements of recognition. I'd like to begin by recognizing following school staff appreciation days celebrated during the month of November. However, before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Veterans Day. If you're a veteran in this room, would you please stand? Thank you so much for your dedication, your service to our country. We appreciate all the hard work and what y'all went through in the past. We also like to recognize career development staff for their service for their district. Our career education department has done an outstanding job over the last few years and we appreciate their dedication and service to our students of Dare County Schools. We also have the week of November 3rd through the 7th is National School Psychologist Week. November 17th through the 21st is American Education Week. The day of November 19th is Education Support Professional Day. And also on November 21st is Substitute Education Day. Thank you all so much for serving our students at Dare County Schools. We appreciate your dedication. Next, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bassnight.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I've got our Director of School Nutrition up here with me to help me with our first recognition tonight.
Sport.
Always. Dare County Schools School Nutrition Manager Patty Kulp has been honored with the prestigious 2025 Mary Long Beasley Award by the School Nutrition Association of North Carolina. This distinguished award is one of the highest honors given to a school nutrition manager in the state, recognizing exceptional leadership and dedication to school nutrition. The Mary Long Beasley Award is presented annually to a school nutrition professional who demonstrates outstanding commitment to improving student wellness. This award is a testament to her outstanding character and professional excellence. Ms. Kulp, if you'll come forward.
Paul, you come up here with me? Please, sir.
The State Board of Education established a task force on October 2nd to rethink how North Carolina measures school success. The initiative stems directly from the Achieving Educational Excellence Strategic Plan, which calls for developing a multi-indicator model that better reflects student growth, readiness, and a full range of learning in North Carolina's public schools. The goal is to hold our schools and students to high academic standards of excellence while capturing a more complete picture of a school and student's success. For nearly 30 years, North Carolina has been a leader in accountability. From the ABC's program of the 1990s to the federal No Child Left Behind requirements of 2000 to today's AF school performance grades. But the current model is a limited reflection of readiness for college, career, and life. Educators, students, and families alike have long expressed a desire for an accountability system that more accurately measures success. We want to answer that call with an improved system that can be recommended to the North Carolina General Assembly. We want the best of our students and families that require us to assemble the best team possible to comprise this task force. That's why the Chairman of the State Board of Education has sent this to Mr. Paul Kinsey. "North Carolina needs your leadership to help us make North Carolina public schools stronger. So I am writing to invite you to join the Task Force on Accountability for Public School Units." Congratulations, everybody.
I'm not sure in Cape Lock, so when I call your school, come up, okay?
Last year, the 11 schools, now 12, in this district posted an extraordinary set of school growth scores. Let me say that again. Last year, the 11 schools in this district posted an extraordinary set of school growth scores. Those growth scores ranked Dare County in the top five of all of North Carolina's 115 school districts with an average growth score of 83.5. Growth absolutely growth is different from proficiency. A proficiency score measures how a student performs on a particular day on a particular test. Currently, proficiency counts as 80% of the school performance grade and growth counts as 20. That's what Paul was just invited to sit on, the committee, to rewrite that. Growth is calculated as the amount of learning that should be expected to take place over the course of an entire school year. Educators across the state have long believed that growth is a stronger predictor of student learning and achievement over time than proficiency on one day at one time. And that's something we believe. That's something we preach here. It, our standard phrase is if you make growth, proficiency will happen. If you make proficiency, you're not necessarily making growth. So we put a lot of emphasis on growth in Dare County Schools. Growth is measured using the EVOs Value Added Growth Model. This model estimates the expected test scores for each student based on that student's prior testing performance and then compares that estimate to the actual outcome. Then, that is compared to all other similar students across the state. Growth identifies where students are making meaningful progress year to year, even if they have not achieved proficiency. This is especially important if students start below grade level. Growth data helps identify where learning is accelerating or decelerating and can be a valuable tool for school improvement effort. The goal is roughly for a school's students to make a year's worth of expected growth in one year. A school that meets or exceeds that expectation is considered to have met growth targets. Listen to these numbers. 6.5, 7.2, 12.9, 15.5, 17.1, 22.1. Those numbers signify the increases in school growth scores in our schools between 23, 24, and 24, 25. It is my honor to recognize 10 of our 11 schools for either meeting or exceeding expected growth for last year, the 24, 25 school year, and presenting each school with certificates of recognition from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. For meeting growth, Cape Patterson Elementary School. Gabrielle Six, so Mary's standing in. First Flight Elementary School. Kitty Hawk Elementary School. Cape Patterson Secondary School. Beth is at a soccer match. And I'm sure we have a couple other principals and ADs that are trying to get out of here pretty quickly too. First Flight High School. Manio High School. Dare Learning Academy. Make sure I got everybody here. For exceeding expected growth, Nagshead Elementary School. First Flight Middle School. Manio Middle School. That's pretty impressive, y'all. Oh, we're not done yet, not done yet. For the 24, 25 school year, Dare County Schools' overall four-year cohort graduation rate for all of our high schools was 93.1%. This number is significantly higher than the four-year cohort graduation rate across the state of 87.8%. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction does not specify the actual number of any graduation percentages that go above the 95% rate and instead just lists them as 95+. Tonight, First Flight High School is being recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for having a four-year cohort graduation rate that exceeds 95%.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you so much for your service and dedication. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Cook, our student advisor.
Alright, this month Kitty Hawk Elementary's events welcomed our school community and families. Our PTO hosted the Fall Carnival and it was well-attended and full of joy. For our Once Upon a Time Pumpkin Contest, families and students created book-themed pumpkins that community members came to judge. Families also enjoyed the adorable kindergarten alphabet fashion show where our youngest leaders showed their alphabet knowledge in world music class. In world music class, students curated percussion maps of North Carolina combining music and geography. Our Student Government Association is leading a thank you project for first responders and community workers encouraging students to write notes of appreciation. Board members, we would like to invite you to our Polar Express Assembly on December 18th, which will feature music, literature, art, and movement. Finally, we are so proud to share that our Beginning Teacher of the Year, Ms. Shannon Foster, was also named the Dare County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year. The First Flight Elementary Trick or Treat Night was an incredible success, welcoming over 400 families for an evening of fun, laughter, connection, and spook. This event was truly a First Flight community effort. It wasn't just First Flight Elementary making the magic happen. Students, staff, and parents from across all three campuses volunteered countless hours and for many, multiple days or weeks to bring the Trick or Treat Night and the Haunted House to life. Thank you to the entire First Flight community for stepping up, showing up, and having some spooky fun with us. We can't wait to do it again next year. First Flight Elementary PTO raised $19,000 from all the proceeds of the Trick or Treat Night. All funds will go directly back into supporting instructional opportunities for our First Flight Elementary students. We also want to welcome our new Assistant Principal, Marty Creach. His first day was on November 3rd and we are so happy to have him on our team. October was a busy and exciting month at First Flight Middle School. Our dual-language immersion in English as a second language teachers collaborated on a meaningful project to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. Students created brochures highlighting various countries. DLI students wrote theirs in Spanish while ESL students produced theirs in English. Our librarian, Ms. Brinkley, hosted her annual Veterans Day program, which included four rounds of veteran visitors who shared their experiences on what Veterans Day means to them. Afterwards, our sixth graders wrote heartfelt letters to local veterans. We also held our first club day, offering activities such as disc golf, board games, math, and word puzzles, and even a no-bait club. Spirit Week brought energy and creativity to our halls, featuring door decorating and costume contests at each grade level and culminating with the PTO's spooky soiree. Our orchestra and choir performed their first concerts of the year in partnership with the high school. Both were spectacular showcases of student talent. And finally, we're proud to share that Mr. Bruce Gimmel, one of two regional finalists for North Carolina Teacher of the Year, hosted a visit from the Department of Public Instruction. The day included interviews with students, caregivers, staff, and administration, along with a classroom observation and instructional highlight. We eagerly await the results of the next round. Check out this video about Mr. Gimmel.
Everyone takes it down to the cover. My tie's great. I tried to catch those double this year. Thank you for coming, panel. I have to go take a shower now.
That looks like fun. First Flight High School had an outstanding month full of Nighthawk pride and achievement. We celebrated an extremely successful homecoming week filled with Nighthawk tradition, spirit, and community. Students will continue to utilize flytime to get valuable academic support, helping them reach their full potential. We also launched the first ever First Flight High School Dance Team who made their debut with an exciting performance at halftime at the homecoming football game. A special congratulations goes to our CTE department and Mr. Brian DePedro for hosting another incredible pumpkin-chunkin' event on Halloween, a First Flight High School favorite that continues to grow into a beloved tradition. Our athletes also shine this season. Congratulations to the girls' golf team for placing first in the region and fourth in the state. To our boys' cross-country team for placing fourth in the state. And to our girls' cross-country team for placing fifth. A huge congratulations to Kayla Folks who brought home the 4A Girls Cross-Country State Championship title. We also want to recognize Brittany Finch as our October Staff Member of the Month for her hard work and dedication. Go Nighthawks.
Naxton Elementary School celebrated Veterans Day with a red, white, and boogie dance on Friday, November 7th. Students who met their behavior goals for the first nine weeks were rewarded with a patriotic-themed glow dance. To honor family members who served, both active and retired, students created small posters featuring their veterans, pictures and information which lined the hallways leading to the dance. Thank you, veterans. Naxton Elementary is also preparing for the Student of the Month luncheons this week to celebrate students who demonstrated a positive growth mindset and responsibility during September and October. Additionally, 26 5th grade students were welcomed as Naxton Elementary School ambassadors. These ambassadors will be divided into teams to help support school events such as Awards Day, chores, and assisting students and staff. The school is excited to launch this new initiative and looks forward to seeing these students take on leadership roles. At Manio Elementary, the after-school music ensembles at the school have been very active since the second week of school and are diligently preparing for fall seasonal tunes and winter holiday concert pieces. The second-year strings rehearse on Tuesdays. The beginning orchestra meets on Wednesdays and the chorus and music theater students rehearse on Thursdays during rise time and after-school. These talented students will perform later this month during rise time at the Manio tree lighting ceremony and at the winter concert on December 11th. Also, in the spring musical Madagascar Junior in May. Manio Middle School Soccer Team went undefeated this season and the school community is very proud of them. Congratulations are also extended to the Manio Middle School Football Team for bringing home the Atlantic Bowl Trophy. Manio Middle School hosted a great, spooktacular concert featuring performances from the 7th and 8th grade band and orchestra. The schools also held its first pep rally to recognize students, student achievements, and fall athletes. Mrs. Gallup's STEM class recently completed their second boat project, naming the boat the Lea in honor of one of their students who is battling leukemia. Appreciation goes out to Mrs. Gallup and her team for their hard work and dedication. At Manio High School, they had over 100 parents attend the Bring Your Parents to Work to School Day, which was a great success. The MHS band has competed in multiple competitions, earning the title of overall band champion in the 2A Division and placing first overall band in the 1A Division the following week. Fall athletics are still in full swing with the soccer team competing in the state playoffs and the football team preparing to host the second round of the state playoffs, marking their first playoff appearance in five years. The tennis team finished the season as conference champions with Coach John Houston named Conference Coach of the Year and players Cora Walker and Natalia Bootsta recognized as Conference Players of the Year. In cross-country, Meredith Gaskell earned the title of Conference Runner of the Year and Coach Emily DiNoto was named Coach of the Year. Thank you.
This has been an exciting month at Cape Patterson Secondary School. Our students have been shining across academics, athletics, and the arts. Our varsity soccer team continues their outstanding season and will host the third round of state playoffs tonight in Buckston at 5:00 PM. We are also incredibly proud of our marching cadets who closed their competition season on a high note by earning first place overall, along with first-place music, first-place visual, and first-place general effect in the 1A Division at the 50th Annual Battle of the Bands Competition. Their hard work and dedication continues to inspire us. In cross-country, Gabby Baker represented CHSS at the state championships and finished ninth in the 1A Division. An impressive achievement demonstrating both perseverance and athletic excellence. This month, we were also honored to host our annual Veterans Day Ceremony. We gathered as a school community to recognize and thank our local veterans and those currently serving. Lieutenant Robert E. Custer delivered a powerful and heartfelt address that truly resonated with our students. The ceremony also featured a beautiful musical performance from our CHSS band, a warm breakfast prepared by our food service program, and a moving original poem shared by our poet laureate, Ellie Nuzzo. We are so proud of our students and grateful for the dedicated staff, families, and community members who support them every day. It's a great time to be a hurricane. The phrase "we rose above the tide" perfectly captures the perseverance and community spirit of CHSS this month. The Fall Festival was a tremendous success, bringing families and staff together for a fun, memorable evening. The event was well-attended and raised valuable funds to support upcoming school programs and activities. Red Ribbon Week encouraged students to make healthy choices and demonstrate school pride. Each day focused on a unique message of responsibility and self-respect, and student participation was outstanding. Fire Safety Week featured interactive stations led by our local firefighters. The firefighters did an exceptional job engaging students and teaching important safety skills in a fun and memorable way. This was a highlight for many of our students. We also held Picture Day using a local photographer, which was well-received by families. Parents greatly appreciated the quality of the photos and the opportunity to support a local business. Overall, this month highlighted the strength and unity of CHSS as we rose truly above the tide together. Great things are happening at Dare Early College. Last week, members of DEC staff visited City High School as part of an innovative study visit hosted by the Early College Network. Staff are reflecting on the visit and brainstorming ways that they can implement that they can implement key strategies to make DEC even better. Our math club members are gearing up for the AMC 10 this week. We wish them the best of luck. Our SGA will be hosting Spirit Days in our first dance on Friday evening. As always, thank you for your continued support and enthusiasm. DEC is growing, thriving and full of great things ahead. Thank you.
Students, thank you so much for the update and all the artwork you put into it. We appreciate it. Next on the item for the agenda is approval of a consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I hope we approve it.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Bright. Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any and ayes. Motion carries, we have consent agenda. Next item is reports for items of information. And first on the agenda is Mr. Larry. Mr. Larry, I don't see Mr. Charity or Mr. Washington. Are they here with you?
Mr. Charity, at practice, I know, I have not spoken with Mr. Washington, so.
Feel free.
Sure.
Ms. Luciana, if you would join, please.
It's all good.
You wouldn't have.
It's all good.
First of all, thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to speak about our proposal to move forward with 7-9 football. And I'm just going to give you a little background about 7-9 football and why we're looking at this as an option. 7-9 football is basically the old junior high model. Back in the day with grades 7 and 9, we're in one school. And this is something that's been going on for a long time in the western part of the state.
Oh, yeah, sure, go for it.
Thank you. See, you got a job. Been going on for a long time in the western part of the state since 1970s. And something that we're looking at because of our failing JV program at Manio High School. We've not had a JV team since 2019. And what we're seeing is a decline in numbers across the board with JV, obviously no JV team and then decline in numbers with varsity as well. So we're trying to come up with a solution to revive the football program at Manio High School. Who would be impacted with all this? Obviously, the current 6th through 8th graders would be the ones that are impacted by this the most and then the families come in after that. So we had a meeting where we spoke to those parents and we spoke to those families to give them information about this and they were on board. And we have discussed with the middle school athletic director, Mr. Washington, kind of some logistics about who would be involved where. So middle school cheer would still get an opportunity to cheer for that team and high school cheer would cheer for high school. We don't have a JV cheer team either because we don't have a JV football team. We have looked at a possible scrimmage with First Flight Middle School. We currently don't play JV against First Flight, so there's nothing lost there. And then our 9th graders would have the option to be up or down depending on their size and skill level and speed and so on. And the coaches have been asked to come up with some measurables to try to determine whether they would be on the varsity team or on the junior high 7-9 team. There's no way to bounce back and forth. Once you're deemed a varsity player, you can't go play on Friday night and then pad your stats on the 7-9 night. It's meant to be developmental for the high school team only. As mentioned with the Y, we haven't had a JV team since 2019. What we're currently seeing is 9th graders that come out and they're not physically or mentally ready to play varsity football. And so they come out and they're blocking dummies basically for their first year and then they quit. And we all know when a kid quits, very rarely are they going to go, you know what? I'm going to go try that again. And so they quit and they go play something else or they go do nothing, which is even worse. We want kids to be involved. And so lost my, oh, yeah. They, these younger players have a fear of playing 18-year-olds. These 18-year-olds are grown and physically mature. And what we're trying to do is create a place for them to play and feel safe, where they can stay in the game and they can remain in football throughout their high school career. We did, our conference is moving forward with this as well. So this is kind of where this came from also. And so there have been some rules put in place. A 9th grader that plays one play in a varsity contest is deemed a varsity player for the remainder of the year. They can't go back and forth. They, the 9th graders could potentially practice alongside the varsity players. The 7th and 8th graders cannot. But our current situation is probably going to have two different facilities and so that's not going to be an issue for us. Some of the schools are going to have 9th graders that wear different colored pennies and they say, hey Johnny, come over here, we need you for this drill. We're not going to have that problem because our 7-9 team will currently practice at the middle school and our varsity team would practice at the high school. The one big change, I guess, for the middle school program would be start time. High school varsity starts around the beginning of August, where the middle school typically starts in the middle of August. And this model would require the middle school to start at the same time the high school starts, that first week of August, to be able to get the number of practices required and the equipment acclimation before they move into their contest. The goal is to play a contest and get that season over with so that those 9th graders that possibly would benefit from being on the varsity team for the latter part of the season would be able to move up at the end and do that. As mentioned, we have had a meeting with Mr. Bassnight and Ms. Fallon and discussed this. And we've also met with family members of the current 6th through 8th graders. Also had discussions with current varsity football players and current middle school players about their thoughts on this. And they all had positive things to say about it. With the fact that it would give them a peace of mind as far as a safety issue. And really, that's what it's all about is safety and keeping kids involved.
I didn't know if you wanted to add that you, y'all have been in contact with some of the people in the western state that run these kinds of.
Yeah, so Neil Blankenship is the one that we've had the most contact with. He's at Swain High School. And that conference has been doing the 7-9 football stuff since the 1970s. I think there's 26 state championships that have come out of that conference. Obviously, that's not what it's all about, right? It's not about creating a state champion, but it is about giving kids an avenue to stay plugged in. And this would certainly do that. So a lot of this model stuff was taken from those guys in the western part of the state. And a lot of the rules, I guess, put in place by our current high school conference were borrowed from that league that currently does this. Again, 7th through 9th graders, as far as we would play other 7 through 9 9th grade teams. And those teams currently moving to that model from our conference would be Camden, Quimmins, Bertie, Edenton and Gates County. So our whole high school conference is moving to this model. And they've all been approved and they're all moving forward with it. The other thing that this does is it provides a cohesive coaching staff. These coaches would work more closely together than they do now. And it would provide an opportunity to create a system that is put in place when the child enters 7th grade and that same system of football, oops, that same system of football throughout their high school career. Here in the same terms, having coaches that have met together to come up with a similar playbook and similar philosophies so that those kids understand that system by the time that they are varsity-level players.
And I think unlike what they have now, they'll be playing those same players, right?
Correct. Correct. Little different than what they do now. Right now, we play in a different middle school league. This would only affect football. It wouldn't affect the other sports. But they would play against players that they would end up playing against in high school. There was a, you don't have to go back, but there was a little bit about safety on the last slide as well. And safety is a big deal for us. We take it very seriously. The idea is that these kids would be overseen by our athletic trainer, which is not something that happens at the middle school. And they would be overseen by our athletic trainer for six years. So we would get baseline concussion information about these athletes for their entire time through 7-9, through the end of their varsity career. And it would allow us to better put in place treatments if there was, in fact, a concussion. Mentioned before, but middle school cheerleaders would cheer for the 7-9 team and our varsity cheer would cheer for our varsity team. And then the coaches sat down, Coach Washington and Coach Charity, sat down and came up with a list of metrics that would be used to help measure and determine whether or not a kid would be considered a varsity player or a 7-9 junior high player. And they're listed, they didn't come up with numbers yet, but they're still in talks about that. But they did come up with some measurables. We don't want to just say, oh, you look like a varsity kid. Oh, you look like a 7-9 kid. They wanted to have something in place that they could have measurables and be able to better place these kids on the right team. But they also want to have conversation with parents. And they want that to be a part of it. Is your kid ready mentally, physically and so on? Before those kids are put somewhere where they might not be ready and then they quit and we end up in the same boat that we're in now. I mentioned health and safety. But this would allow these athletes to undergo the same procedures that they would do in high school. And so it would kind of streamline the process by the time they get to high school. There are requirements for high school athletes that aren't required for middle school athletes. But in doing this, we would make those kids fill out the same rank-one forms. We would make those kids have the same, which they have the same physical law, but the Feller Waller forms, they would have to do all of that, which are things that are required by the time they get to high school. So it would streamline the process as they're moving forward. And then this just talks about the fact that, and I mentioned this before, but this slide, when a kid quits something, they have a very little chance of coming back to it. But also a kid that is involved in extracurricular has a much better chance of being successful in the classroom. And that's ultimately what it's about. And so having this football or, you know, whatever, but in this case, football, where they're plugged in, you got more eyes looking at them, you got more coaches that are supporting them and trying to move them forward in the classroom. Do you guys have any questions for me? Yeah.
He got thrown into this. He's only been the AD for a little while and had to come up to speed. But I did want you to know that this has been going on for at least two years. I brought Mr. Bassnight up to speed, Ms. Fallon up to speed. And their first thing, because we had been discussing this, like I said, for well over two years, was do the research, come back to us when you have a lot more information. So we gathered that information, we've done as much homework as we can. And honestly, there's really not a lot of choice. There is, if we don't go this way, there will be, you know, we'll continue with 9th grade. The rest of the all-league is definitely going 7th through 9th. I talked to Neil Blankenship back when I was a member of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association and that's the first time I even heard of the idea. And then I brought Alfie in and then Alfie and I started discussing this. And then, like I said, Mr. Bassnight and Ms. Fallon were particular about, okay, do your homework. So he was around for the end of the homework. But we've been really talking about this and doing the research on this and talking to kids and talking to parents for well over a year.
Any questions for any board member?
Tell me a couple. Been out of it a while, what's a rank-one form?
So these are, these are forms that are, they're digital now and they're permission slips and medical and concussion. And there's certain things that the High School Athletic Association requires that, basically homework that has to be done before an athlete can participate. And they're done digitally now. So it's through rank-one is the system that we use.
So they're required to have physicals like.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Equipment purchase.
Well, so currently where we're at, we would be able to merge equipment between, I mean, we have plenty of extra equipment for, because we used to have a JV program. And so we have equipment in place and helmets have been cycled out. And so we're in good shape as far as that goes. And I don't think there would be any need for major equipment purchases. It would be basically taking the purchases that we're making now and just continuing that.
Any other questions?
As long as you have a conference to play in and this is the way that it's going, I think it seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, and we discussed with, the middle school was concerned about funds because football pays a lot of the bills. And so we currently don't have a JV team, so we're not getting anything from that anyway. So this, the funding from this would go to the middle school.
So they would host the game?
They would host the games, they would staff the games.
Program, just like it does on.
They get the concessions. If you ever think. Yep. We would take it, no money at the high school. And trainers at the game or no?
They would have to have trainers, yeah.
When this discussion first started, there were, we were talking about getting involved. There were two other teams. And the first thing we talked about is if you don't have anybody to play, you can't have a league. That's changed a lot in the past year and a half. And essentially, in response to your question, you're taking the funds that you're spending on two programs, middle school and JV, because we plan to have a JV every year, we just don't have kids come out. And you're rolling them into one program. So you're actually financially gaining a little bit.
Mr. Larry, I want to thank you for stepping up in your new role for Manio High School. You're doing outstanding job and keep up the good work, buddy.
Thank you, appreciate you guys' time.
Sir, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fallon, you need to go sit down, you're next on the agenda for Dare County Public Health.
Um, yes. Great, yes. So I'm not going to say a whole lot. I'm going to bring to the podium Ms. Lisa Ainsley. She's going to talk to you a little bit about a current initiative that we're getting ready to roll out. We actually did some training with our health and PE teachers at the secondary level today so that we can start implementation in the spring. But before she talks about it, I want to just sort of set the stage for how we ended up here. Last year, actually at a board meeting, and I can't remember how it came up, but I had spoken with some of our student advisors about vaping in the high schools and sort of trends that they were seeing. I think Mary Alon, I think you actually brought it up. And we started a conversation with those students and about, you know, what could we do? So last summer, in meeting with my principals and probably late last spring, we really looked at discipline and consequences. What can we do to impact that and be more restorative? And so from that discussion came, okay, well, we need to have an education piece. Because I don't think kids realize how dangerous this is. And I shared that, you know, when I was growing up, they talked about the dangers of smoking. And they had that nasty picture of somebody's black lungs in every school. And it had an impact on me. And so I began this year, I've already taught with the student advisors, they were 100% on board. Ironically, you reached out to me, the stars aligned and said, what do you think about this program? So I did my research and we think it's the way to go to really be, help to educate our youth. And what I really like about this program is it looks at all aspects of that decision-making that gets you to the point where you're a vapor. So how are you impacted by marketing? If you don't realize it's happening to you, you know, it's potentially not going to be good. Obviously, what are the health effects and the impacts of that? And then some pieces where the kids can really learn to make better decisions and give some scenarios where they can, you know, there's peer pressure is a tough thing. And from the research, that's how kids start vaping. So this can go down to 5th grade. We would like to reach out to our 5th grade folks in the spring, but we're not there yet on our implementation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ainsley. She's going to tell you a little bit about the Catch My Breath program. Yep, you want me to click for you? I can do, okay, go on.
Hi, good evening, members of the board, administrators, teachers and community partners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Lisa Ainsley and not only am I a public health education specialist with Dare County's Department of Health and Human Services, but I'm also a parent with students in Dare County schools. I currently serve as the peer power teacher at First Flight High School. It is an honor and a privilege to be here tonight to share with you about this exciting opportunity called Catch My Breath, a youth vaping prevention program. I would like to extend a special thank you to Denise Fallon, the Director of Secondary Education for Dare County Schools for taking time to meet with me, discussing this initiative and supporting its adoption within the school system. and supporting its adoption within the school system. Her partnership has been instrumental in moving this program forward. I would also like to give a sincere thank you to Teresa Beardsley, our Regional Tobacco Manager with Albemarle Regional Health Services. She has provided me with the training, program, materials, and resources necessary to implement Catch My Breath effectively. Her support has ensured that we are fully prepared to bring this program and its benefits into our schools. Here's a quick overview of the Catch My Breath program. It was developed by a university team along with input from a youth advisory board, ensuring that the lessons are relevant and meaningful to students. The curriculum is designed for grades five through 12 with four developmentally appropriate lessons at each level. Core lessons and training available in both English and Spanish, and the program is already being used successfully in more than 2,500 school districts across the country. It aligns with national and state education standards and is evidence-based, meaning its effectiveness has been proven through peer-reviewed research. The program is also endorsed by respected education, public health, and government organizations, making it a trusted choice for schools. In January of 2020, Catch My Breath demonstrated effectiveness in peer-reviewed studies, making it the first evidence-based youth vaping prevention program. The study was published in Public Health Reports, the official journal of the U.S. Surgeon General. The program was designed by the lead researcher, Professor Stephen Keldor from the University of Texas Health Science Center at Houston School of Public Health. Dr. Keldor was a senior scientific editor of the 2016 Surgeon General's Report on Youth E Cigarette Use and has over 30 years of experience developing and researching child health programs. Currently, Catch My Breath is the only youth vaping prevention program that is evidence-based in improving both knowledge and behavior. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or otherwise known as SAMSA, is the agency within the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services that leads public efforts to advance the behavioral health of the nation. Catch My Breath is the only school-based intervention listed in SAMSA's evidence-based resource guide series on reducing vaping among youth and youth, young adults. Based on the findings of the peer-reviewed research paper as published in Public Health Reports, here's an example of what this program could do for schools across the country, including ours. The average seventh grade class in U.S. public schools is approximately 192 students. If nothing is done, we project 17 of those seventh grade students will try an e-cigarette by the end of this school year. If a school implements Catch My Breath, eight of those 17 students, or about 45%, will not try an e-cigarette this year. If every public school in the country implemented Catch My Breath, approximately 153,000 fewer seventh grade kids would try e-cigarettes this year alone. Catch My Breath is a nicotine vaping prevention program that has been proven effective at reducing the likelihood that students will experiment with vaping. The theoretical background for the program is social cognitive theory, which views health behaviors as products of personal, social, and environmental factors. Catch My Breath helps students develop answers to these important questions. Personal, what do I know about e-cigarettes? What can I do? And what are my beliefs and attitudes about e-cigarettes? Social, what is the social response to using or not using e-cigarettes? And environmental, how does my environmental support and reward or discourage and punish the use of not using e-cigarettes? In addition to building knowledge, Catch My Breath disrupts normative beliefs such as the notion that everybody's doing it. Students develop skills to help them resist peer pressure and see through advertising and misinformation that perpetuates online and from their peers. And as a whole, the program creates favorable attitudes and beliefs about not using e-cigarettes. The question isn't what will my students do if they're exposed to e-cigarettes? It's what will my students do when they're exposed to e-cigarettes? Catch My Breath gives students a wide range of skills and tools to help them respond to any number of real-world scenarios. This program has been aligned with national health education standards, Common Core, and Castle core competencies for social emotional learning. This program meets our state health education standards, allowing implementation of this program to meet those requirements. Catch Global Foundation has been able to successfully bring the program nationwide and has worked with districts of all shapes and sizes in every state. As you can see, Catch My Breath is in every state across the country and reaches small rural communities like Idaho Falls and large metro districts like New York City Public Schools. 90% of the top 100 districts use Catch My Breath, with 185 of the top 250 using Catch My Breath. There are currently over 700 Catch My Breath community trainers across the country for sustainability of implementation within their communities. Catch has made it easy and doable to implement their program. It has a proven formula of knowledge building plus skill building and environmental support in order to develop healthy kids for a lifetime. These key three things work together to create healthy learners. Where this program certainly builds knowledge around health behaviors and decision-making, it really backs it up with skill-building practice and opportunities to reinforce the information. Those two things coupled with the environmental support really make it possible to develop healthy learners who make healthy decisions day in and day out. Skill building and environmental support are why Catch My Breath is the only program with an evidence base of behavior change. It also offers additional curriculum and resources, including parent toolkit and supplements that go beyond vaping. And as far as training, there are several professional development opportunities provided by Catch My Breath. However, I have been provided the opportunity to take these trainings in order to train Dare County Schools educators at no cost. Catch My Breath also offers a whole suite of K through 12 health and wellness programs focused on prevention, strengthening mental health and resilience, and developing skills for stress management and release, healthy relationship building, other substance avoidance, and supporting overall health and wellness. In closing, the Catch My Breath program gives our students the knowledge and support they need to make healthy choices and avoid the risk of vaping. But its success depends on all of us, educators, families, administrators, and this board, working together to protect the well-being of our students. By bringing together our shared resources, skills, and relationships, we've shown that working as a community accomplishes more than any one group could achieve alone. By adopting this program, we have taken a proactive step in strengthening not just our schools, but our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for Ms. Ainsley? Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
Next item, Ms. Lambert.
Good evening, Chairman Twitty, Superintendent Bass Night, and members of the board. My name is Reese Lambert. I am the Early Literacy and Advanced Teaching Roles Coordinator for Dare County Schools. Working with the TLFs is a very rewarding part of my role and I am honored to share some insight into the impact that they have across the district with you tonight. So our teaching and learning facilitators, we abbreviate that to TLFs frequently because it's kind of a mouthful, but it represents what they do very well. So they provide a continuum of support to staff members across the district that is individualized, personalized, targeted, and specific, if we're using our acronym here. So sometimes that is new teachers who need support with management strategies, they may need help implementing effective routines and procedures, or they may need help helping make sure that students are engaged and they're participating so that they can get the most out of a lesson, right? But TLFs don't only support new teachers. Sometimes this looks like partnering with an experienced teacher to work through collaborative planning and problem-solving with them, analyzing the data for their class to help plan reteaches. And sometimes it's working with a professional learning community, whether that's a grade level or a subject team, to help them analyze their data as well. Additionally, TLFs can provide on-demand support to their schools, whether that is a professional learning session that a principal has identified a need for, or helping our teachers implement platforms, resources, or curriculum materials that they need to implement. So I would like to recognize the TLFs before we move much farther. At Kitty Hawk Elementary School, we have Melody Alexander. At Nagstead Elementary School, we have Lisa Watson. First Flight Elementary School, Jeannie Mauser. New to Manio Elementary School this year is Bernie Tipton. At Cape Patteras Elementary School, we have Meredith Wilson. At Cape Patteras Secondary School, we have Jules Gorgeous. At First Flight Middle School, we have Brett Sternberg. And at Manio Middle School, we have Christine Corriera. So we have eight full-time teaching and learning facilitators across all of our elementary and middle schools, and of course, including Cape Patteras Secondary there. So in order to be a teaching and learning facilitator who is supporting staff members in various roles across your school, you can imagine that they do a lot of professional learning of their own to make sure that they are able to help anybody who comes to them. This includes right now a book study that we are working through called Teach Like a Champion 3.0: 63 Techniques That Put Students on the Path to College. One of the coolest things that TLFs have engaged in recently, they have started planning our book study sessions now, and they're getting to partner up with other TLFs that they don't usually work with. So Jeannie Mauser from First Flight Elementary and Brett Sternberg from First Flight Middle, they led our last book study session, which was really neat to see them get to work together because they don't usually cross those age lines, right, from elementary to middle school. So they're getting to plan some of that professional learning and implement those strategies themselves as they are helping their teammates work through it too. They have also earned certifications from Corwin Learning. We have at least two TLFs across the district who are certified in Visible Learning, PLC+ which is Professional Learning Communities Plus. That's a way that you can engage and work with your grade level or subject teams, teacher clarity, restorative practices, and nourishing new teachers. And they also have TLF PLCs. So about twice a month, they get together and they get to work with each other to practice using and teaching techniques from Teach Like a Champion. They get to collaborate on professional learning for staff that they may want to implement. And they get to practice facilitating some of that professional learning because as you can imagine, coming out of a classroom where you're usually teaching children and then going into a room where you are now teaching adults is very different. And it's not always, you know, comfortable for all of us. So they get to practice that with each other, which is a great thing for them to do together. They provide a variety of school support as well. So many of the elementary TLFs are supporting walk-to-read implementation right now across the district through training, modeling, and coaching. So they may help teachers implement the youth-like curriculum, they may model some of those lessons, or observe a teacher who is teaching that and help work on different sections. They are currently providing individualized coaching support to over 50 staff members across the district right now. And those, they work with those staff members to identify a goal that is meaningful to that teacher and their students. Then they come up with something for that staff member to learn to help them meet that goal. And then they work with that staff member in implementing it over time. So it's not a set a goal, I'll come back and see four weeks from now, did you get it? It's very collaborative. They talk with that person and they find out where that person wants to grow, they figure out how that person wants to learn, whatever it is they're going to implement, and then they work with them along the way as they try to implement that strategy. They also support grade level and subject professional learning communities whenever it's requested. So most of their time is spent one-on-one coaching, which aligns with our goal of really deep support instead of kind of sprinkling all over the place. But when it's requested, they can support a grade level team or a subject area team as they work through something that they want to improve on. One other area that the elementary TLFs have supported with this year is working on an assessment team. So at beginning, middle, and end of year, elementary teachers have to take about three weeks out of their school year to do in-class testing. This year, the elementary TLFs took on the work of administering all of those assessments. In first grade, there are five assessments that have to be done individually, one-on-one with every single student. So you can imagine that takes several hours per week out of teachers' days. And the elementary TLFs took on getting all of that finished. We were able to get classrooms done in about two hours in the biggest classrooms and it was completely finished. So that gave teachers a lot of instructional time back in their day. So individualized support, I wanted you to see some of the types of goals that TLFs are working through. These have been edited because one of the key pieces of the work that TLFs do with teachers is making sure that teachers, what they work on is anonymous, right? So it can be very personal whenever I come to you and say, hey, I really want to work on getting better at this part of my job. So we do work very hard to make sure that we keep that anonymous for them. But I wanted you to see some real examples of goals that they have worked on. So here are a few. Establishing routines and forgiving instructions and making sure the students are tracking the speaker. What that means is looking at whoever is talking, whether it's the student or the teacher in the classroom, right? Step-by-step strategies for breaking down test questions, using those EOG Power Words to help build student confidence, and using clear expectations with checklists and exemplars to help support student success. So there are a few examples, but we're going to get a little bit more granular. So one teacher identified that something that was really causing a problem for them were student disruptions while they were teaching. And this was a need that they came to a TLF with and said that they would like help decreasing the number of student disruptions. So they set a goal that they would decrease disruptions by 50% during a 30-minute period. The TLF worked with them to come up with some strategies to implement. And within two weeks, the TLF went back to observe and the disruptions had reduced by 73%. So they well exceeded their goal and that teacher was able to deliver much more effective instruction after just a couple of tweaks. Another example was a teacher who wanted to make sure that her students were really retaining the information that they were learning. So she was delivering these beautiful lessons, but then kids were walking away and they came back the next day and they're like, what are you talking about? So one of the things that she worked on with her TLF were active learning methods and retention strategies. So they worked to make sure that when students came back, they had still retained and they built in intentional ways for those to bring that information back based on retention science, which tells us the best time to remember something is right before you're about to forget it. So they worked really hard to plan those intentional times to bring that information back before it disappeared. This is an example of a goal that a teacher worked on along with a teacher reflection. So when they work through these goals, part of that is that the teacher will reflect on the impact of meeting that goal. And they work through the impact of that both for themselves and for their students. So this teacher had set a goal specific to vocabulary strategies and reflected that she had been able to develop a better understanding of what her students were retaining, but she was also seeing that the impact of more personalized vocabulary strategies that she hadn't seen prior to implementing those strategies. So our TLFs, like I said, worked with over 50 teachers one-on-one right now. Last year, we supported over that amount as well. And so if we were to dig into student data for all of that, I could take up the next three hours. But I do want to share some specific examples of student impact that we saw last year. So we had a fourth grade classroom that had a 34% increase in reading accuracy from beginning of year to end of year last year, a third grade classroom with TLF support that had a 30% growth in reading accuracy, and a second grade classroom with TLF support that had a 40% growth in reading accuracy from the beginning of year to the end of the year. So all three of these teachers were teachers who worked on a weekly basis with their TLF. And we were able to see their goals specific to different reading strategies, how to direct impact on student outcomes. So last year, we also did a survey and we asked teachers to share their feedback on the impact that they thought that TLFs had had. And when I first did this, I used AI and it helped me a lot, but I realized after the first few that I had only given it the responses from people who didn't work one-on-one. And already the responses that I had gotten were really positive and glowing. So that was kind of a cool moment just to see like, these were only people who interacted with them in full staff meetings or on a tangential basis, and they were already having really great feedback about the impact of that TLF. So I went back and did it again with the surveys from people who were working one-on-one, and obviously it got even better. But it was just neat to see that they're not only impacting the people that they work directly with, but also people across the building. So the feedback from these surveys fell into a few different categories. One of those being strategies, modeling, and demonstrations. And I do want to give a caveat because I'm about And I do want to give a caveat because I'm about to share a few slides of really wonderful feedback about our TLFs, and I want to make it clear that I do not own any of this feedback. I am not a TLF, so all of the feedback that you're about to see directly belongs to our teaching and learning facilitators that you saw a few minutes ago. I'm really proud of the work that they have done, but I want to make sure that you know this was all them. So you can see here, being able to observe the TLF helped calm stress for a teacher, also helping to increase efficiency, which we know our teachers', you know, time is a very important thing for them, and so anything that we can do to help them feel effective and efficient is a huge benefit. We also saw a lot of feedback that came around data-driven decision-making. The line here at the bottom, I focused more on what the students are showing in their data and using that to tailor their groupings helps show that TLFs are having an impact on making sure our district goals of targeted, purposeful learning are happening in classrooms, and staff are seeing the impact of that in their classrooms. Feedback also included a lot of comments about collaboration and approachability, that their TLFs are always able to help out, that they listened to them and worked together, and that the TLF is positive and eager to help them, which you would know if you meet these people, and I hope that you do, but it's also great to see that reflected in the feedback from teachers, that that's how they feel about the TLFs in their building. There were also several comments about teacher confidence and professional growth, with teachers saying they felt more confident, that they built better habits, and started seeing results that once felt out of reach. And that was a really powerful thing to see because as a teacher, when you know that your kids are capable of something, but you're not sure how to get them there, seeing that teachers recognized their TLF support helped them get there was really powerful. All right, now this is a word map that is made from over 150 survey responses from Dare County Schools teachers in June, and these were the 12 most common words that came up in those responses. And the final response that I want to share with you was from a new teacher. And if you'll read that last sentence there, without it, I may not still be teaching, it being the TLF support. And that is really what TLFs are all about, right? We have wonderful staff members in our district. We have wonderful people in our classrooms, teaching our children every day, and we know that this job is very hard. It's very rewarding, but it is very hard. And so seeing some of those staff members say, without this support, they might not still be here for our kids, I think is a really powerful way to see the impact of our teaching and learning facilitators because we're keeping those people here in our classrooms. So once again, there are our TLFs across the district. They are doing wonderful work, and if you see any of them around, please let them know how much we appreciate what they do to support our students and our staff members in helping them to bring out their best. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Payne? Thank you for a good update. Mr. Bassnight, I'll turn it back over to you.
Short but sweet. We talked about being audited all the time. Well, we've been audited again. I really think they just like to do that to us. Your public school unit was selected for monitoring for the 24-25 school year, and subsequently, Manio High School was contacted requesting written evidence and documentation to verify the withdrawal of students reported in a four- and five-year 2024-25 cohort graduation rate. We would like to thank the school staff for their cooperation and timely response. We would also like to compliment them on their comprehensive record-keeping practices. The report, the reported denominators of students in the 24-25, four- and five-year cohorts were confirmed. So DPI found another thing that we're doing well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Next, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hitch for unfinished business.
Thank you, Chair. What we have for unfinished business is some second readings of proposed policy manual updates. Many of these were provided through the School Board Association, suggested updates to policies. They have been through the Policy Review Committee and are now being presented to the Board for decision.
So that being said, do I have a motion to adopt the policy manual updates as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt policy manuals updates as presented.
Motion by Mr. Payne. Second by Mr. Bright. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Updated policy. Ms. Hitch, you want to go over new business?
Yes, so under new business, we have the policies that are on for first reading, and I don't know whether Mr. Brower has anything to say about the policies that are on for first reading and the work of the committee.
Sure. First reading, we've got 6320, which is use of student transportation services. This is a policy that we've been following. We just didn't have a policy for it, so this is actually a new policy, and it just delineates when you can use a yellow school bus, you know, and what kind of activities and what needs to happen with that. We also have a policy for absences due to inclement weather. This came from National, or North Carolina School Board Association, and it outlines employees' opera, pardon me, their options for coming to work or reporting to work, and it just puts us in compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act. We had policy 4120 for domiciled residence requirements. This is statutory, and it's simply, it's language incorporated for military families, particularly. Policy 5024, we updated the emergency epinephrine delivery systems. It used to be EpiPens. There are other delivery systems besides the EpiPens, so those are now included. We also had 5070, public records, retention, release, and disposition, and it's just a change recommended by the North Carolina School Board Association to comply with the public records law with how we report salaries. Salaries for employees from a public perspective. The compensation does, will also include, I guess, besides their salary, it's going to be supplements, reimbursements, and all other allowances are going to be kind of grouped into that, too. So there's nothing all that earth-shattering or groundbreaking there, but I'd encourage everyone to read it and read the policies, and we'll vote on it next month.
Mr. Brower, if I just add one thing, too, that we discussed in the policy committee meeting. Policy 7550, the absences during inclement weather, those are practices that we're already doing. We just didn't have a board policy that specified those practices, so that's where that one came from.
Thank you, Mr. Brower. Thank you, Ms. Hitch. Next item would be Mr. Ian Adams, Director of Facilities. If he could come up, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board. Mr. Bassnight?
Sure.
And Oakley Collier couldn't be here with us in person, but they're here with us in spirit. Tim, you there?
Maybe, in spirit.
He fell asleep.
Yes.
There you go.
Make sure I click on the right one here.
I do have a slideshow here for you. This is my first time with pictures. Out of all my presentations, we finally got some pictures put together for one. Excuse me. So here, asking for the approval to award MHS Field House construction to AR Chesson. The construction of the field house was put out for formal bid on September 5th, 2025, with bid opening held at Central Office of Dare County Schools on October 2nd. Five general contractors submitted bids and attended the bid opening, lowest, most responses. Responsible bidder was AR Chesson.
I have a trouble every time I say that.
Totally, with contract totaling of $1,589,000, and bid alternates totaling $41,170, bringing contract total to $1,630,170. Bid alternates were identified for door hardware.
What thousand?
One million.
Yes.
That'd be a heck of a deal.
Thousand sounds better.
Crack open the checkbook right now. Bid alternates were identified for door hardware to be similar to existing best school systems, and the fire-resistant paint deemed necessary by the Farm Marshal's Office due to a low pressure level at the closest hydrant, which was a substantial increase.
Yes.
We're working with them on that. We probably can change the hydrant to see if we achieve the pressure we need. That hydrant was damaged many years ago, and was deemed sufficient and safe, but might fix it with that as well. That'd be a huge cost savings. Mr. Bassnight, and I recommend the Board approve the bid made by AR Chesson and accept all our alternates for a total contract cost of $1,630,170. Steve Holly was clicking through.
Excuse me.
Phil.
Or Mr. Bassnight was.
If you have any questions. Is there any questions for Mr. Adams?
This, in addition, if you're looking at the schematic there, in addition, this also provides additional public restrooms on the exterior fields at Manio High School, which is something we've been dealing with for several years now. One of the reasons that we got the mobile trailer was to put it out there because they were having such a hard time with their restrooms over by the concession stand and their drainage. This will add a men's and a women's bathroom on the side of the locker room. Mr. Bassnight, Mr. Ian, can you tell us, give us an idea of where this field house is going to be positioned on that route, close to the athletic fields? Yes, sir. When you walk in the football gate, coming through the gate, and you turn left on the sidewalk, and you start toward the soccer field, it will sit to the left of that sidewalk before you get to the soccer field, oriented not directly toward the back of the property, but more oriented toward the football field. So when you come out the front of this building, you'll enter the gate right there, the first gate you come to, in the end zone on the north end of the football field.
And we have talked with Mr. Leary, AD, and Larry Sharad, and we already have a plan in place to relocate that existing sand volleyball court.
There's a single sand volleyball court there. I think it was donated, and we'll relocate that.
Any other questions? With having none, do I have a motion on the floor to approve the bid and accept all alternates as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the bid made by AR Chesson and accept all alternates for a total of contract cost of $1,630,170 as requested.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Bateman.
I'll second that, look.
Second by Mr. Bright. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Thank you, Tim, for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ian, don't go far.
Am I doing the talk?
No, no, not by yourself.
Okay.
Ms. Broll, Ms. Bridges, will you please come to the front with Mr. Adams?
I also have to say, I'm upset Mr. Luciano left because I wanted to tell him, I told you we'd get it done.
Soccer game.
I get it. You kept saying, we'll see.
All right, I should have let Ian do it. I won't throw you to the wolves like that, though. So as you all know, back in, at our last meeting, we had a presentation on everyone's playground. They are very, very close, and I was just talking to Macy, and she is, they are excited. They are in the final process, final stages of the contract with the company for the playground. So we are moving forward with, we are asking for a recommend, recommend the Board acknowledge the intent to make the donation to Dare County Schools pending final design approval from our Director of Facilities, that you all give the superintendent permission to authorize the installation of everyone's playground. We are waiting until we have a finalized contract, which will hopefully be next month, with the final amount and the renderings of what the playground will look like. So that is what we are recommending.
So is there a motion on the floor?
Katie, can you restate that, what we're requesting the motion to be, please?
Yep, so we are requesting the intent to make the donation to Dare County Schools pending final design approval by the Director of Facilities to authorize the installation of everyone's playground.
I'll make a motion as you decide. Motion by Mr. Bright. Second. Second by Mr. Work. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Acknowledge of intent. So whatever they present, that's going to be good, or do we come back and vote on it?
Our plan is to come back in December with the final, because we didn't want to say, oh, yeah, we're going to, so that's why we're not saying we're accepting the donation at this point, because we don't have the finalized amount, the renderings and all that. So once we have that, that'll hopefully be December. So this is just the intent to accept that donation.
And this was, excuse me, and this was a push from me to give them the warm fuzzy that we're, hopefully, we're going to accept this, and they, you know, a big, big spend on their part, and they just want the knowledge that we're going to move forward once we have it. And I wasn't ready to move forward without those things that I requested yet. So it's kind of how we worked out the phrasing between us and Rachel and Mr. Bassnight.
Thank you. And we talked about what, what, how could they go about letting the people that are ordering the playground equipment know that the Board, the Board is aware that the equipment's coming, what the plans are with it and all that, all that stuff, so that they could go, and they would be satisfied with the Board acknowledging that they intend to receive this as a donation, but with the understanding that we don't have an itemized donation list at this point.
Because it's going to be over the threshold, so he's going to have to come back to the Board for approval. So that's, that's what we have to do.
Correct.
Any other questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Macy. Now, it's a pleasure to turn it over to Ms. Fallon and Ms. Mount.
Okay, well, this is Cassie Mount, the new principal for Dare Early College, and she's been working with her students and her staff and the community to really lay out some plans, doing great things, have the early college, and so she's got some stuff she wants to share with you tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you so, thank you so much. You know, your agenda will say that I'm here to recommend the adoption of a mascot for Dare Early College, but mascots don't just happen. I really wish that I'd thought to have worn a hard hat tonight because this is truly a year of building for Dare Early College. If you drive through Manio, as I'm sure you have, it's thrilling to see the physical structure that's going up, but I want to assure you and also just let you in on the construction that's taking place tucked away inside COA by our staff, our students, and our families. A school, yes, it needs a physical building, but it's made up of people. It's made up of intentionality, and that's what we have that's happening. We are being very intentional about building our relationships, a culture, the processes, and then also the core instruction that's going to be a solid foundation for Dare Early College as we continue to grow. Back in September, we began the process of developing a mission and vision for Dare Early College. We needed a direction, and I began by giving all parents, students, and staff the opportunity to answer four questions. Why does Dare Early College exist? What impact do we want our school to have on students and on our community? What are some values that make our school unique? How should our graduates contribute to their community or futures? From those responses, several themes emerged. One was a focus on equity and opportunity. Another was commitment to growth and aspiration, goal orientation and perseverance, service leadership, individualized support, and adaptability. We also asked students questions related to the selection of a mascot that would symbolize what they felt Dare Early College was all about. Their responses made it clear that our mascot needed to symbolize resilience, self-discovery, courage, leadership, strategical thinking, and integrity. With all of this valuable feedback, we developed a mission and vision, as you can see here. Our mission is to empower students to discover their passions, thrive in learning, and lead with purpose and courage. Our vision is that Dare Early College is cultivating a community of leaders who navigate challenges with purpose. challenges with purpose, courage, innovation, and integrity as they guide and serve their communities. At the end of the day, that's what we want our students to be about. In a nutshell, we're empowering students to discover, thrive, and lead. For many reasons, the mascot that we believe best embodies the mission and vision of Dare Early College is the Dare Early College Mariners. Mariners discover by charting new courses, exploring the unknown with curiosity and courage. At Dare Early College, we're seeing that happen because our students are literally charting college courses. Our college liaison, John Hunting, has worked with students to develop four-year plans that chart every course that would be needed to take in order to achieve the goal of an associate's degree or a career certification at the end of four years. Mariners thrive by relying on skill, preparation, and teamwork to succeed through challenges and change. Mariners lead by guiding others safely to shore, demonstrating leadership, integrity, and resilience. We have plans in place developed by our staff and school improvement team to help students develop habits that have them thinking beyond themselves and into how they can serve the community and lead. By definition, a mariner is a person who navigates or assists in navigating a ship. It's a basic definition, and it seems pretty simple and maybe even lackluster. But you know what I love about it? It's so broad that the fact mariner encompasses a range of professions, to name a few. Merchant mariners, members of the Coast Guard, naval officers and sailors, commercial fishermen are mariners, marine engineers, cruise ship crews, research vessel scientists, harbor pilots, deep sea divers, salvage operators, oceanographers, marine researchers, the list goes on. But the application of this concept to Dare Early College is profound, because just as the term mariner unites individuals across several nautical professions, our mariner mascot will unite students pursuing a variety of career pathways. At this time, our student body is composed of aspiring artists, nurses, welders, teachers, archaeologists, firefighters, engineers, boat builders, and the list goes on. Our goal is to help these students chart their course, navigate challenges, develop grit, and follow their own horizons. So my recommendation to you is that you would adopt mariners as the official mascot of Dare Early College. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mount.
Yes.
Do I have a motion on the floor to adopt the mariners as being the early college mascot?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the name of the Dare Colli, excuse me, Dare Early College mascot as requested.
Motion by Mr. Payne.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brower. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any ayes?
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I just have to share, now that you've approved it, we're going to be celebrating throughout the rest of the week with some, I don't know what we were going to do if you said no, with a few spirit days. But then also on Friday, our students will be taking a scavenger hunt to Dare County, I'm sorry, downtown Manio, and will be visiting historical landmarks, landing at the Roanoke Island Maritime Museum, enjoying a special pizza lunch, and then having our first DEC dance, which I will now officially call our Mariner's Ball. So thank you very much.
Ms. Mount, thank you so much, and I know the kids really enjoyed the participation in making this happen for them. Next item, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bridges and Ms. Fallon for the school improvement plan.
We're here tonight. I know that our schools, our secondary and elementary schools, and working with their school improvement teams, developed each school's individual school improvement plan for this school year, and we've submitted those for your approval. Their teams worked on that, and remember, our school improvement team is made up of staff members, administrators, and parents. And so I know our folks have done a lot of work, and they're meeting with their teams ongoing to monitor that progress, to do some really great things in our schools in Dare County. So with that, I'd like to ask that you.
Is there any questions from any member of the board? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could remind you, the school safety plans that we discussed in closed session are a part of this.
As well, yes. So with that being said, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the school improvement plans and confidential school safety components as presented.
Motion by Mr. Payne.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bateman. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries. Thank you all aces.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Yes, sir. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Bassnight and Ms. Pearl concerning the lengthening of the hours for Cape Hatteras Elementary School and Cape Hatteras Secondary School.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. We've been working very hard over the last month with Principal Beth Rooks and Assistant Principal Gabrielle Gettings and Hatteras Secondary and Hatteras Elementary. Obviously, we know the challenges that they faced with weather and overwash this year, and it's really not been recently, it's been ever since we started. I think the nor'easter started blowing in August 1st and stopped. And we're getting, you know, the ocean overwash is consistent, the dune line that was protecting pretty much everything south of Oregon Illinois has really been damaged, so that now it's a question of really, how much can the, how long can a dune hold up when the next time we have a hard nor'easter? To that end, we've also missed several days and have been cutting into our remote learning days as well. When we started this school year out, we had, for Hatteras Elementary and Hatteras Secondary, we had six days that exceeded the 1,025 hours. Just reminded me of something, thank you. People get, people get hung up talking about the number of days we have to go to school. We do not use, North Carolina gave us the option several years ago, to use either number of days or number of hours in a school year. We use hours, and that amounts to 1,025 hours. We currently have about 175 days, but days do not matter in our calendar. It's all calculated on that 1,025 hours. We started this school year, Cape Hatteras Elementary and Secondary had six days above the 1,025 hours, so six additional days beyond that, plus five days of remote learning that we were given by the state. That's a unique situation in itself, because the way that is explained from the Department of Public Instruction is the district has five remote learning days. That means when the entire district is closed. Now, we rarely close the entire district. A lot of times, we close north of the inlet, or we close south of the inlet, but it's rare unless it's like a hurricane that we close the entire districts to use remote learning days. It's also complicated by the fact that you really can't use remote learning days if you don't have power. So you may call it a remote learning day, but unless it's paperwork, it's not. Currently, Cape Hatteras has used five remote days, but the entire district hasn't used five remote days. So those days are still available to us, and we're using those. Having said that, we're getting, we're down currently to, I think, four remaining days above the 1,025 hours for Hatteras Elementary and Hatteras Secondary. We need to add some additional days to the Hatteras calendar, and we can do that by adding minutes, which goes back to the 1,025 hours. We have talked with our staff in Hatteras. They currently have, both elementary and secondary school, have their students at their buildings before the start of the school day. So what we proposed and discussed with that staff is we're going to add 10 additional minutes to the morning and 10 additional minutes to the afternoon, for a total of 20 extra minutes per day. By doing that, one, we don't exceed the contract of days or contract times of our teachers, our current teachers, so we're okay there. But by adding 20 minutes a day, we'll add an additional 16 days to our school calendar for Hatteras, above the 1,025 hours. That may seem like a lot right now, but this is November, and we've already eat up basically 11 days since the start of the school year. So we're going to add that additional 16 days to the calendar that we can use and will continue to use our remote days. Now, I want everybody to hear me say this. Adding days and minutes for instruction to our students doesn't add instruction to our students. And we took this equation beyond just adding time, because our students are losing instructional time at school from our staff. And the part I want everybody to hear is, we are not going back to the days where we expect our parents to instruct our students. That's not their job. That's our job. So not only are we going to add minutes to the day, but any day that we have remote learning in Dare County Schools for our Cape Hatteras Elementary and Secondary students, we are going to create three sites. One of those in the Tri Villages, one of those in Hatteras, and the other one at Cape Hatteras Secondary School. The reason we're doing that is because we want our students coming to school with their teachers, not staying at home with their parents and trying to do their schoolwork. So, for example, you have a student in a class, their teacher will provide them an assignment, and then our teachers will help facilitate the learning for that assignment, that assignment, excuse me. And the way we're going to work that schedule is in the morning, beginning at 8:00, 4:00, 7:40 in the morning, our elementary students will report to those remote sites. They will stay there until 11:30. And our students that live in the Tri Villages will be able to go to the Tri Village site. The students that live in the Buxton and Frisco areas will be able to come to the Buxton Cape Hatteras Secondary School site, and the students that live in Hatteras Village will be able to go to the Hatteras Village site. The reason we chose those areas is because when the tide comes up from the ocean, from the science, a little different, but when it comes up from the ocean, those are the areas that get cut off, so you can't go between locations. So we're going to use those natural boundaries where the ocean comes through. We're going to create a site in the Tri Villages, and all of our students in the Tri Villages will go to that site along with all of our staff in the Tri Villages. We're going to create a site at Cape Hatteras Secondary School where all of our students from Buxton and Frisco will go to that site with our staff from that site, from that area. And we're going to create a site in Hatteras where all of our students and staff who are in Hatteras will go to those areas. We are going to station buses in each of those areas. In the Hatteras and Tri Villages, we've already got them in Buxton, where the bus will be able to go pick up students and/or staff and bring them to that site, so that our staff will be facilitating learning for our students in those three locations. Elementary will be 7:40 to 11:30. We would dismiss them at 11:30, and from 12:30 to 3:30, our secondary students will report to those sites. In the morning, our secondary staff will assist our elementary staff in facilitating learning. In the afternoon, our elementary staff will facilitate learning with our secondary staff. We are able to do that, to provide that instruction to our students, so that we're the ones doing the teaching, because we don't want to just add minutes to the day when we're actually losing learning in our students. So we have to provide that opportunity for our students to learn as well. While all that is going on, at that point, we are able to not only have our students come to those locations, but also all of our staff, the only staff that will be left out of those locations would be our cafeteria staff, and we're working on something at the Buxton School for them to be able to go. We won't be able to provide meals on those days because we can't get the meals to Hatteras and to the Villages, but we're going, we're working to get our cafeteria staff in Hatteras paid as well. So all of our staff will be able to work and be paid, and our students will be able to go to a location where our teachers are instructing those students. Now, we have not given up on our Good Cause waiver. As of this morning, we, we have to prove to the state over the last 10 years that we have had at least four years of days where we had to dismiss for weather. Eight, sorry, eight days in four years that we had to dismiss for weather. We are down to, we've got three days, three years taken care of, and we're looking for one more day in our fourth year to make that fourth year eight days. Here's why that got complicated. We can use the five remote learning days that we've been using, but typically, when you change the calendar, if you have a day that you can't go to school, you add an optional workday at the end of the year so that the staff has the 215 days. We have to go back now and go through those optional workdays and make sure that we have optional workdays that were weather days when we moved them. And, and we're almost there. As soon as we have eight days over four years in the last 10 years, we're going back to DPI and request that Good Cause waiver, that which will give us 15 remote learning days additional that we can use, which hopefully, between the 16 days, the 15 remote learning days, we'll get through the school year. But it gives us a cushion. It's a long-range plan, but it provides instruction from our staff for our students on Hatteras Island. It has taken a lot and a lot of people working to get to this point, a lot of input. When you, when you think about pre-K, when you think about EC students and EC staff, when you think about having the right instructors and the right building to address depending on where they live, south of Oregon Illinois, it's taken a lot of input. I greatly appreciate the work that's been done by Beth Rooks, by Gabrielle Gettings, by our staff at Central Office in sitting down and saying, how can we make this happen? And I think the plan that we've come up with is a really good plan. I hope you are willing to approve it tonight. We have, the community has stepped up and said, use our locations, and they'll get, they will come out in the morning and open those up for us anytime we have a remote day. So we're ready to put this in practice. We're ready to get this information out to our parents and our staff, and I'm requesting that the board approve our plan for Cape Hatteras Schools for the remainder of the school year. Yes, sir?
Couple of questions, Mr. Bassnight. You said tomorrow morning that they're going to, the proposed locations will come out?
No, any morning that we have a remote day.
Okay.
Instead of us having keys to those locations, they've already reached out to us and said, we will come open them for you anytime you need them.
What are those locations?
Katie, do you have those written down?
I do. So Hatteras, it's the Civic Center and Community Building, and then in the Tri, it's, there's two, two potential locations, the Civic Center or a church. And then Buxton will be Hatteras Secondary.
We wanted two locations in each of those places in the event that we got tied from somewhere else, signed tight, and it flooded another area. So we've got a plan and a backup to the plan.
So when you.
What? Well, I was going to say, this also includes kids at the Dare Early College, correct?
Yes, it does. And we've made that available for them to be able to go to Cape Hatteras Secondary School and work there on any days that they can't get north. So that'll continue.
And you were saying all staff, that's our custodians?
Yes, sir. Depending on where they live, they've got a role.
Okay.
How's transportation going to work on that? Will there be, like, if someone's up in the Tri-Villages, will they, and say, parent can't get onto school, is there any way to make that happen?
Alex, we've met with Alex. We're going to have a bus in the Tri-Villages and a bus in Hatteras. And those buses will go around and pick up our students or our staff who don't want to drive their cars or through water to get to these locations as well in the event they have to do that.
Unless something changed, we have currently already a bus in the Tri-Villages that the driver parks at there, the Mac Water Department for the counties.
And Alex said that, you know, we would have a driver in each of those locations so we don't have to get somebody there in order to run the bus.
Any other questions? So do I have a motion on the floor to adopt the extending of the hours of Cape Hatteras Elementary and Cape Hatteras Secondary School and the alternative locations? Motion by Mr. Bright.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Good job. Next, I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I originally had the thought of putting together a curriculum team that included two or three board members, possibly a student advisor, along with the superintendent, directors. But as I was studying this, our attorney, who is very adept at our policy, noticed that superintendent already has a curriculum committee set up. And the members of that committee are kind of what I had put down on paper. With the Board of Education having general control and supervision of all matters for the public schools, we hear about test scores. We have a pretty good understanding of what the test scores represent. But my thought for the curriculum team was to have board members and maybe one of the student advisors join us to get more of an insight on what happens curriculum-wise in our schools. So with our policy, Mr. Bassnight, that has the team members that I'd suggested, what I'd like to do is move forward to our policy committee to make an adaptation to Policy 3100 to add, along with what you already have in place, two board members and maybe a student advisor to join that curriculum committee, A, to get a better understanding, and maybe have some input also. So what I'd like to do is...
Basically, what you're asking is for 3100 to be brought to the policy committee to revisit and add some changes as adding a couple of board members and possibly a student advisory to the policy.
Yeah, we could do that easily, as long as we have something drafted. I imagine it's not going to be that difficult to amend what we already have. You know, we could put an offer for the next meeting. If you support, we could do it after one reading since it's already school.
Miss Hitch, if you would, add that to the policy committee meeting next month?
Yes, sir.
Or actually, end of this month, Policy 3100?
I think it's the 24th.
24th, yes, ma'am. You go with that, Mr. Payne?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes our board meeting tonight. But I would like to turn it over to the floor, and I'll start off with Mr. Bright, our board members.
Thank you very much. I'd like to double down on what Mrs. Stroh you said over there about Veterans Day celebration at Cape Hatteras Secondary School. It was amazing. And if you guys can get on Facebook to the Cape Hatteras School page and see the poem that the poet laureate, Miss Ellie Newsom, wrote. I think it's called "Sleeping Past the Alarm" or something, where her poem is about the veterans and people who answered the call so that we're allowed to sleep through our alarms in the morning. And it was very touching. I actually saw some tears out of some veterans' eyes coming from that. And I would encourage everyone to take just a couple of minutes and look at that. Mr. Superintendent, the academic growth that you reported on, outstanding, sir. Thank you very much for your service on that. The Manio Field House is getting some progress going. I know it's been a long time coming, and we're all very excited about that project, and we can't wait to get that going. I was pleased to learn about the TLF program that we have going. That was very encouraging, and I enjoyed that. Two more things real quick. The communications that the citizens receive when we have road issues is, in my opinion, outstanding. My wife's phone rings, she looks at the numbers to school, then my phone rings, then we get a text, then we get an email, and then it's all on social media. So I really appreciate the multiple avenues of getting this information out to the students and parents. It's really appreciated, and I think it's done very well. Thank you, sir. Last thing, I can't say enough about these marching canes. Yes, my son plays trombone, and he's in there, but these kids are killing it. Please go to the Facebook page for the school and look at that snow hill performance they did, and you will just be amazed. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Mr. Bateman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's send a shout-out. I got a couple of them up here. Mr. Louis Daisy, 4th grade, Nagshead Elementary School, and Miss Adaro's class. I believe it's a DLI student. Did I say it wrong? Of course I did. He attended, I hosted trivia night most Wednesdays throughout the month over at McGrath's, and he and his parents came in and played. And he was telling me, went to Nagshead, and I said, well, you're going to end up on the shout-out list at the next board meeting, so. I was hoping Miss Commissioner Balance was still going to be in the room. We both were the emcees for the education tent at the Seafood Festival. And there were three First Flight High School Culinary Arts students. Ellie, Lily, and Eleanor came and did some preparations and some cooking and stuff like that. And if you haven't had a chance to see that facility, they have at First Flight High School for Culinary Arts. It's pretty rad. I know Mr. Tyson, he walked me through it, and it's pretty awesome. So they did a great job. Really enthused about the Manio Middle School and the Manio High School, the JV or the program, 7th and 9th graders. I attended that meeting that they had at Manio Middle School for the parents and the students. And I walked in very skeptical, and I walked out very enthused. So definitely a cool thing. The Early College is rocking my world right now. I've stopped by a good handful of times, visited with Miss Mountain, and just walked around and looked at everything. And I attended their PTO meeting. And they had a little PTO fundraiser to, a little barbecue fundraiser not long ago. Helped generate some funds, go in that direction and get something up. Started a lot of good energy there, a lot of good ideas. And Miss Mountain, you're doing a tremendous job over there. Keep up the good work. The Veteran Forum at First Flight Middle School was really cool. Mr. Gimmel, he is the man. Let me tell you something. I stood with Miss Brinkley, kind of in the other classroom next to when he was being interviewed by the folks at NCDPI. And they were asking him questions and everything, and she said, they're about to tar and feather him in a second. I said, what? So they did. When they started walking him outside, that's, the video you saw was me walking behind him. So that was definitely a really cool thing to witness. And just how he pours back into those kids is unreal, unreal. The Veterans Appreciation at Cape Hatteras Secondary School, Mr. Payne and Mr. Bright and myself were in attendance. And this is what they gave, I don't know if you can see it real well, the veterans. I got, I ended up with two, being an Army veteran. And they drew in them, and it was just a really nice gesture by the 2nd graders at Cape Hatteras Elementary School. Got me choked up. I think we were all sitting there kind of like, I'm not crying, you're crying, that sort of thing. I know Manio Elementary School is getting ready to have their Winter Wonderland coming up the first Saturday in December, so that's going to be a lot of fun. It's right after the Manio Christmas parades, if you're around. Please come by and check that out. We've got a PTO member in the crowd over there. Hello, Shannon. Dollar raffle tickets, okay. I want to shout out to Mr. Holly. We've got our recruitment and retention meeting coming up here in the near future to get our teachers here and keep them here. Really excited about that. And as I always like to do, 252-256-3252, that is my cell phone number. It rings directly to me. It's not a third party to me. Goes right straight to me. Happy to talk to you anytime. You may not always like what I tell you, but I'm happy to talk to you. Oh, one more question for the student advisors. I'm not a very good math student. I was wondering if y'all could help me with a math problem real quick. Can you try? All right. What's 70 minus 3? 6-7! 6-7! All right, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman. You like that, Mr. Bassnight?
Miss Lloyd?
I want to echo all the Happy Veterans Day to everyone out there that's a veteran. My husband's a 34-year Coast Guard veteran, so it's near and dear to my heart. And especially the Mariners name, that I was really impressed with. And not just the name, but what the symbolism of it means and what that stands for. That's most impressive and something for the students to achieve and work towards. So I'm really impressed with that. And my grandfather was a merchant mariner, so, you know, many, many, many pieces and parts. I think that's wonderful. To the TLFs out there, what a great job they're doing. They're amazing people. And I thought about it, they're mentors to our teachers, and then our teachers are mentors to our students. And so it's a beautiful picture that comes together when you see what they're all doing and working hard to put together. And so I think that's a wonderful place to be for them. I attended the Veterans Day presentation at First Flight Middle School, which was very impressive. I went because my husband was there, so it was kind of out of default, but also because I love hearing our veterans speak. And most of all, I loved hearing the students ask questions about what a veteran was. And when they were asked what Veterans Day was originally called, and they had the right name, I was really impressed. Does anybody know what it was called before Veterans Day?
Remembered States?
Pharmacist's Day. And so our students knew that, and I thought, that's impressive. They are learning and remembering these things. And so if you have a chance tomorrow's Veterans Day actually celebrated, be sure and reach out and think of a veteran because they really do sacrifice a lot for us to be sitting here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Lloyd. Mr. Wick?
Yeah, I like the Early College Mariner too. That's about all I had.
Mr. Brower?
I got to attend a new rivalry between Manio and First Flight, the Pufferfish Bowl. The Pufferfish Bowl teams. And Mr. Bassnight, Mr. Payne were there also. It was a lot of fun watching. It's very spirited. I think we got the makings of a rivalry for years to come. The other thing, I really enjoyed my time at the Dare County Schools at Play Recognition and Awards Centers, which there were a few of us there. It's just always good to be at an event where there's just so much positivity. It's just a lot of fun. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Just go.
Okay. The Catch My Breath curriculum, a student advisor sat in on a quick meeting with Miss Fallon to discuss that. So it was exciting to see it come to life here. But I did want to plant a seed, because something that we discussed but I didn't hear much about is how we're going to get students who have already unfortunately, like, become addicted and like tried vaping, how we can get them to stop through the school program? Maybe something with our counselors, or if there's an additional program or another branch on Catch My Breath? I feel like that's something that we can put in there. Unless it's already somewhere hidden in that presentation, I feel like that would be something I would like to see. Also, I was excited while flipping through the agenda to see the acknowledgement to proceed on everyone's playground. I'm really excited to see that continue to come to life in the future. Also, I wanted to congratulate all of our schools on our academic growth. That's exciting to see. And I do think that at First Flight, fly time being continued this year has been helpful on that as well. A lot of students are utilizing that to their advantage that we can continue to get that support we need. It's very, like, personalized, being able to choose for ourselves, so that's all I have.
Just listening and reading the highlights, I noticed that all Fall Athletic Teams have been, like, soaring these past couple of months. And I feel like, just from the past, it has not always been like that. So I think it's cool that they're excelling this year. The 7-9 football program at Manio, I never thought something like that could be cool for Manio. But I saw it firsthand. My brother is unfortunately very undersized. In his freshman year, he tried out for the football team and realized, I'm 5 foot tall, and these are 18-year-old players at Northeastern, maybe it's not a good idea. But I think ultimately, it will bring a lot of more, like, mental stability to these younger players. And I think it's a really cool idea. I'm not surprised that Miss Ullary stepped in. I mean, I've taken, I've had him for two years in a row, and I'm a favorite teacher. The vaping initiative, the Catch My Breath program, I think it's going to be very effective because, like Jasmine said, just seeing it firsthand, it's like, it's not that these students don't want to stop, it's that they, you know, physically and mentally can't. So I think it being an evidence-based behavior change program, I think that there could be some really good, you know, actions taken in that. And then it's also cool to see the initiatives taken for all of the Cape Hatteras Secondary and Elementary School teachers and students to be able to be in a classroom. I mean, personally, remote days, love them, I get to sleep in, but not having my teachers there, I'm a very hands-on learner, and I feel like both teachers and students will definitely, you know, it'll be a positive impact for them.
So I wanted to say that the 7-9 football program is a good idea just because I think it is a developing year for middle schoolers, but also the freshmen. It makes playing time easier, coming in like, you know, a 9th grader, you're all scrawny. And so you're still taking that time to develop, and it'll be easier for them to get playing time and not competing with the upperclassmen and the 10th graders. To go off of the Catch My Breath vape initiative, I wanted to emphasize on starting with the 5th graders because it's a very developing age. And, you know, you don't really think that it starts that early, but it does. And so I think that that goes hand in hand with peer pressure as well. They're more subject and more prone to fall into that just because they're so young. So I think it's great that we're starting with the 5th graders. And I wanted to thank Mr. Bright and Mr. Bateman and Mr. Payne for coming to the Veterans Day ceremony. It means a lot for you guys to be there and coming on that way to come out and support the veterans. And the Mariners, what a fun name, and I think that it fits the Dare Early College perfectly. And as well as support in the idea of three different sites for the remote learning days. As a Cape Hatteras student, Overwatch is not my favorite thing to deal with coming up to school. It kind of annoys me. So to have a spot in Hatteras, specifically at the Civic Center, I think that it'll be helpful and increase student engagement because, I mean, like, when I'm going online, I don't really pay attention. So I think it'll be nice to actually, like, be in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bassnight?
Thanks, sir. First of all, you mentioned the information that we put out. Hannah, we can't do that without her. I mean, she's tremendous in everything she does, and she just takes it to a higher level. But, you know, sitting here tonight and looking at this room, everybody's playground, Catch My Breath, commissioners, we've got administrators all over the room, school and district, parents, our student advisors, Tony and Kathy Lamb. Brock Kai, and for those of you that didn't know, Kai has been looking into public service. He came over to our board packet meeting. He's getting ready to start college. And he's studying what you're doing and learning from the process. And I admire that and I appreciate it. from the process, and I admire that and I appreciate it, and Kai, we're here for you if you need us. Thanks for coming to the meeting. Did want you, Marty, you stand up, I'll call you out in your first board meeting. This is Marty Creach, he's our new assistant principal at First Flight Elementary. See what happens when you come to a board meeting, you call that. And finally, just want to give everybody a heads up. Coming soon, okay? There, we were contacted some time ago by an international online magazine that highlights school districts throughout the country and internationally. It's called Business View Magazine, and sometime within the next, within this month, I would think, they will be releasing an article that they have done on Darry County Schools, and we got to see a draft last week, and it is phenomenal. So really excited for that to come out, so just everybody heads up on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Payne?
Mr. Payne, if I may, real quick, I just got word that Manio won their soccer game 3-0.
Awesome.
So...
Hannah Snow.
Can we say Joe? Can we get anything here? Okay.
Mr. Payne?
Darry County is unique. We live in a, on a peninsula, one of two islands or a mainland. I think it's probably the most unique areas in all of the US. And Mr. Bassnight, I was at the packet meeting, and your team spent a heck of a lot of time trying to put that schedule together, and appreciate it, because I know that took a lot of work to try to figure all that out, the hours, the time. So, yeah, I really appreciate that. That was, it's awesome. Thank you. Yep. Ms. Mount? It's the best. Great mission statement, great vision statement, and the Mariners, excellent. Excellent. Pufferfish Bowl, the undefeated coach in high school football for girls, Coach Joe Tyson. Congratulations, sir. How's it feel to be undefeated, Coach?
Oh, good, very. That's a lot of fun.
I want to go back to my two colleagues here at Cape Hatteras Secondary School. I've attended many, many Veterans Day programs. That was awesome. At the end, I'm a little choked up here, 2nd graders are leaving. One of the 2nd graders with the VMI shirt on shook every veteran's head. That was awesome. Unbelievable program. Hats off to everybody at Cape Hatteras. Awesome. And I want to talk about the band for a second. Mr. Bright? A lot of high school bands sound good, without question. This is the first time I've heard that band play, and what did I say after? It was amazing. Some great musicians at Cape Hatteras Secondary School. That was awesome. Unbelievable program. Hats off to everybody at Cape Hatteras. Awesome. And I want to talk about the band for a second. Mr. Bright? A lot of high school bands sound good, without question. This is the first time I've heard that band play, and what did I say after? It was amazing. Some great musicians at Cape Hatteras Secondary School. That was awesome. And I always leave with, dare guarantee, seniors, take a look at COA after graduation, go to school, doesn't cost you a dime. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Mr. Bassnight took some thunder. That's all right. I want to introduce tonight two outstanding retired employees Darry County Schools has, and that's Kathy Lamb and Tony Lamb. Thank y'all for being here tonight. I've had the pleasure of working with them for many years, but my biggest pleasure was being a student under Mr. Lamb. What an amazing teacher he was, and he was one that I looked up to and still do today. So Kai, you got a wonderful grandparent, and I know they support you very well, and he's actually working that same program. Mr. Payne, he's going to the COA until January and didn't even be accepted to USCW, so congratulations. Thank you for being at the agenda packet meeting with us. I hope you enjoyed that and learned something from that, and I'm sure that the commissioners' meeting you went to certainly made you open the eyes as well. That particular afternoon, I had the pleasure of going to Kitty Hawk Elementary School to do a little presentation along with their workshop for the SGA. You know, I'd come home and I'd come up with that song, I said, Kids Say the Darnest Thing? That's true. It was, it was nice. It was really, really nice opportunity to work with them and see their growth in their SGA. They got a lot of good ideas that I'm sure to be given to Ms. Colvin to go further with that. Our staff is amazing all over this district. Ms. Mount, thank you so much for putting the energy with the Early College mascot. I know it didn't come just from you, but you're the mariner of the Early College, so I'm glad to have had that then. And students, thank you for what you've done, for giving us highlights, so it'd make it where we see the reflection and the highlights of the schools, and it means a lot to not just me, but our full board, and also the public, you know, there's folks out there in Darry County, may not have children in their school, but in school district, but they want to see what's going on in their school district, so thank you for that. With that being said, do I have a motion on the floor to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Payne? Second. Second by Ms. Lloyd? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion.
If you never heard it, that's a little bit of a reason.
I'm going to stupid.